Good evening, Mayor Rep., City Council. My name's Joe Belcher, and I own Backstreet Deli. I want to thank Mr. Brown and City Council for their continued effort in the bus transit parking situation. As you can tell, everybody has a passion for this. I would like to also thank Lee Stevens for coming to the deli and showing me the plans of the bus transit. Many of us like the idea of the diagonal parking along Superior Mall. It would be a positive improvement to the parking problem. However, we are concerned with limited parking in front of the transit center. We feel we need to keep parking as close to the downtown businesses as possible. Yes, I would love a parking deck, but I guess they don't have the funds for that right now. But let's hope they at least put the footings down and think about future development. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address City Council?
Kathleen McCready, 414 Fourteenth Street. I just want to voice my support for Resolution Number One. Thank you.
Hello, City Council. My name is Jerry Treble. Thank you, Kim Harmon, on 1037 Cedar Street. It's been a long time. I bought four of these hut homes, and it seems like every time I turn around, I've got to put a sidewalk in. And these homes was demolition. I'm sure, is it the city going to pay for the sidewalks after the homeowner's gone? I'm sure the sidewalks are deroded. And, you know, I got into this landlord business about five years ago, and I bought a home on 415 Eleventh Street, the dope house. I've had it for 10 years. There hasn't been one drug bust there yet, and it won't be. And it seems like every time I turn around, it's something the city raising. The water rates, raising the rental thing. I've had a four-year permit ever since I had this thing. Now I get inspected in March, and I only get a two-year permit, and my rates go up. I had my first people I put in that place was out of the pathway shelter. The first guy lasted two years downstairs, and a black family upstairs lasted three. And he tried to get a job in this town, and both families got run out. They couldn't afford the water. My rental monthly rate has never changed in 10 years, and I got all current leases. And these hut homes, these homes that you're tearing down should be torn down. I go buy them every day. Actually, I'll go buy them four tomorrow to see what the sidewalks look like. And Mrs. Child, thank you for, you know, cooperating with this sidewalk thing. And, you know, the cities and just the sidewalks, I look at these people here, and you might have new sidewalks at the beginning of that curb. You don't look behind you and see the deroded sidewalks. So I made complaints and turned some people in. So one of them was, must have been renters, because I looked on the Internet, and I got all renters. The next people I'm going to go for is the people with the city owns, and I already see this. And someone turns me in for one of my rentals. Doug Link, and I met him. I mean, that was a brief encounter. They turn me in for that sidewalk. That's fine. I get ahold of them. He says, "Well, just do the approach." I goes over there today, and there's about eight pieces of what actually I'm going to do. I look to the left of me, and that sidewalk you can't even walk down it. I can't believe, this is what they tell me, you've got to have a complaint on a sidewalk before anything's done about it. What sense is that? I've talked to Kim Harmon for not even two weeks, and I get these trees ripped down, because I won't put a sidewalk when the trees are ripping the sidewalk up. The whole year, I talked to Doug Lincoln, forestry, over and over and over and over. Talks to this lady, two weeks, trees come down. On 415 Eleventh Street, I complained, it took three years to get a tree down. Then when they tore it down, they left a hole in the ground for two weeks. My tenant calls and says, "Hey, there's a big hole in the ground." He puts the trash buckets over until the city come and fill the homeland. And they didn't put no grass seed down. They do own the boulevard, right? So these trees come down, I'm firing them, and not even a week later, the holes are filled. They got grass seed. Then Doug Link calls me, and says, "Where's the new sidewalk?" And, you know, I look at the sidewalks, and I see all kinds of repairs. I says, "What, can I repair three of these until next year?" "No, do the whole thing. Hundred and eighty foot, sixteen hundred bucks."
Your four minutes are up if you can wrap it up.
Thank you.
If you have anything else you can.
I'll see you next week.
Okay.
Trina Avadisian, Fifteenth Street Port Huron. I'm here tonight to support Resolution Number One. I wasn't going to say anything, because really and truly, I don't think anybody's going to listen, but I just think that you should be supporting. You all got up there under the democratic process. I think you should support the democratic process. One way or the other, it should be decided by the people. I don't care which way, but I just think it needs to go to a vote of the people. When you're spending that kind of money, that kind of thing should go to the people. I know that you aren't really in charge of that. It's the county commissioners, but I think you should support Resolution Number One and the democratic process. Thank you.
Angela Kelly, I'm on Eleventh Street. I also like to support Resolution Number One and, of course, the democratic process. I'm not sure why city and county leaders don't think that they have to listen to the people that voted them in, but also to remember that we will remember this in the fall also. So it's about time that people start listening to the people that are in charge, to the people that are actually paying their taxes and making the decisions to stay here and stick it out. We definitely want the City of Port Huron. Hi. We definitely want to encourage the City of Port Huron to be more business-friendly and to be definitely tourist-friendly, and I myself personally have tried to take that to a personal level also. So we're just hoping for that, and also for the downtown businesses. And I'm surprised Larry didn't mention the lofts. We're really excited about all the lofts coming into downtown. They need somewhere to park. It's a really hard issue, and I hope you guys can all put that back into place. And they definitely, for the businesses right there on Superior Mall, they need to be able to have access to their back doors and to also do be seen. So just to make sure that you continue to be business-friendly in the City of Port Huron. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address City Council?
Anthony America, Port Huron. I still don't understand why we have to have prayer at the beginning of the meetings. Marysville doesn't. I mean, what about the old Roman religion? What about the Druids? You know? It's always the same thing, prayer at the beginning of the meeting. Why do we have to have it? Now, I hope I got you all upset. And another thing, what's with Atchison? We gave that man our most valuable land. Because he don't get his way, he gets angry. He pulls his money back. He sells a tall ship. He stopped all that development that was supposed to be. What's going on in this town? We didn't name Port Huron Port Atchison, and this is what he does in return. And the Marina. Them people haven't done anything. Take that land back. Charge them a penalty. Give us back our Marina. They haven't kept any words. Everybody's taken everybody, and you all giving the money away? The people aren't getting anything? Come on. Boo Atchison.
Is there anyone else in the audience this evening who would like to address City Council under public comment? Seeing no one, I will declare public comment closed. We will move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion? So moved. Is there a second?
Support.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Archibald and Councilmember Lewandowski. All will take the vote.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Moller.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Mayor Rep. Yes. On the consent agenda, we had two communications that were received and filed. One from the Blue Water Center for Independent Living in support of Option A for the Blue Water Area Transit Proposal. Second letter from Wayne Lapores and the Blue Water League for the Blind and Visually Impaired in support of the Blue Water Area Transit Proposal. Resolutions directed the city clerk to submit to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission the city's objection to renewal of certain liquor licenses because of delinquent property taxes. Reappointed Donna Kelly and Darcy Mackey to the Beautification Commission for terms to expire January 30th, 2015. Confirmed and declared single lot special assessments in the total amount of $272.96 for special trash pickup in the right-of-way. Under ordinances, a second reading and enactment of an ordinance to amend Chapter 52 Zoning, Article 3, District Regulations, Division 1, Section 52, 162, maps of the Code of Ordinances for the Purpose of Rezoning Property at 716 Seventeenth Street from C1 General Business, zoning district to an A1 Medium Density Multiple Family Residential Zoning District. And that is the items on the consent agenda, and we will move on to City Manager Recommendation Number One.
It's a recommendation that the bid of Grace Performance in the amount of $13,740.67 for the purchase of a multipurpose utility vehicle to be used primarily for special events and waterfront patrols with funding from Operation Stone Garden grant funds be accepted.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Lewandowski. Is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
I guess we could ask them to come up and give an explanation as to why they need a four-wheeler.
Mayor, Council. I can't take all the credit for this. It was actually suggested about 25 years ago by Councilman Moller. But this instruments to be used to mainly police the waterfront, the beaches, and the parks areas where we can't get to with scout cars. Last year, we had an inordinate amount of problems in the north end, especially by lakeside beach. We'd approach, and cars can't drive down into the sand. The officers walked down, the people walked five feet into the water, and the problems would continue. And we'd have that night after night, or they'd disperse up the beach, and we wouldn't be able to take any enforcement action. We were able to write a grant through the Stone Garden process just before it ended for equipment and cover the cost of this vehicle with all with grant monies. And also wrote a grant through Enbridge Petroleum. We received money from them for the same vehicle. So it can be used for patrolling the beaches, the parks, the Thomas Edison Walkway, and also for special events in the city.
Is this something that you're going to trailer, or is it something that an officer will be riding around?
It is actually roadworthy. It can be ran on the streets, licensed, insured, and running on the streets, so it can be utilized actually on the streets. We do have the capabilities of a trailer if needed.
Thank you. Has anyone else got questions for Chief Reeves while he's up there?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Moller.
It's all grant money?
All grant money.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? We will take the vote.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Moller.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. From the City Manager Recommendation Number Two.
It's a recommendation that the bid of McKenzie Concrete Incorporated in the estimated amount of $93,888.75 for the 2012 annual sidewalk contract be accepted.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Cole. Is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald. Is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
Can I ask Mr. Clegg a question?
Sure.
It just seems kind of odd we only got two bids, especially in an economy like this, when I know in the years past, we seemed to have different contractors that bid on it before than these two. I'm just curious as to why we only have two bids this time.
Mayor Rep. and Councilmembers, our experience is with this type of work, which is relatively scattered. There's very few companies that actually want to take on this kind of work. Most of the concrete work we do is a subcontract to a project, and it has a very fixed area with a significant volume of work to be done. In these cases, the work is scattered throughout the city. They're relatively small. There might be a few slabs here, a few slabs there, an ADA ramp here, a section of concrete roadway. And it comes in fits and starts, if you will, to the contractor. As a consequence, our experience has been typically, we only get two bids, maybe three bids for this type of work. One of our past bidders has decided to retire, and he's in his 70s now. And I was surprised when he told me, because I never would have guessed by looking at him. Very, very, he looks younger than I do, as a matter of fact, but he told me he's in his 70s, and he's kind of backing out, so.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious.
I was kind of hoping he would stick around, but he says he's finally going to hang it up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Clegg? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Moller.
No.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes. We will move on to resolutions. Resolution Number One.
It's requesting that the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners call for a referendum vote to seek voter approval on the issuance of bonds for the Thomas Edison Inn Convention Center project, and this was requested by Councilmember Moller.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilmember Harris. Is there discussion?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Moller.
I'm not asking that anyone here change your vote or position on the Convention Center that this council supported on a four-to-three vote. I am simply asking that we, as a council, let our residents know that we, as a council, believe in and support democracy, not only in this great nation, but in St. Clair County and the City of Port Huron, and that we support their right to vote. I know that the County Board of Commissioners has already voted not to allow a vote by the people, because as Rhino Commissioner London stated, that the people would vote it down. That is why we can't let the people vote. Something in my youth, sometime in my youth, I was told that I would only hear that in the Soviet Union or Nazi Germany, or in today's world and Iran and North Korea, but not in America, or God forbid, in my home county of St. Clair. This is nothing that is binding on anyone, but sends a clear message that we support democracy in its purest form in the City of Port Huron and not the elites like some members of the County Board of Commissioners.
Do we have other comments from the council?
One thing I'd like to comment about, you know, we sit here tonight, and we talk about everybody that has an opinion on the transit center, which we all do, and we accept that with good conscience. And I think it'd take good conscience to put this to a vote of the citizens of Port Huron. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Councilmember Lewandowski.
Well, I know we hear a lot about democracy and how we are denying people a right to vote. Unfortunately, yes, we do live in a democracy, but people voted us here to make the choices for them sometimes. And it gets to a point, I think, now that if every time we come to a decision that somebody doesn't like, they're going to want to vote on it, and the simple way to vote on it is to knock me out of the election ballot next time. And then we get called out, and people like to grandstand in the newspapers and say whatever it is that they might want to say to get their name in the paper. But let's not forget where we come from, folks. You know, none of us up here are elite, and, you know, I didn't get up here because I was elite, and I'm sure the rest of them didn't either. And I think that we need to be careful as we're setting the precedent as that, hey, look, you know, we don't like how the council voted tonight, so I want to vote on it now because I don't agree with you. And there's a lot of people out there that will agree that this thing needs to be built. And as far as, you know, somebody being elite and who's not elite, I didn't get my job because of my brother, like some people up here. Thank you.
Is there any other comments from council?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Archibald.
I'd just like to go on record saying I've supported this development from the beginning. It's not the city council or the city's money that we're spending. Yes, it is taxpayer dollars. It's the county commissioners' decision. And I think frankly, as a city, we stand to gain the most out of anybody from the Convention Center. Not that I don't think it will help Marysville and Fort Grashit especially, the townships and the surrounding communities, but we stand to gain the most. And I find it ironic that it will be our business people that are going to reap the benefits of this, and yet, as a community, we're fighting about it. I personally think it's a phenomenal idea. Baker College is going to spend their own money to build that. Margaret, it's not our money. It's not your money. That's private dollars that they're spending to the Culinary Arts Center. Nobody's putting any government money into that.
The Convention Center.
That would be the county commissioners and the county dollars. But just so you know, that Baker College is private. It's all their own funding. We're not putting anything into that. Really, I think as a community, we should rally behind this, and we should hope that it does happen. And when it does, we should all get together and hope to keep it full instead of sitting here saying it's going to be empty all the time. Let's all get together and find a way to make sure that it's not empty all the time, and it does what we're all saying it will do.
Is there any other comments from other council people? I guess I would like to enter into this too and say comments, and I guess I'd have to comment first. I have actually wrote down my thoughts this afternoon so that I didn't sound jumbled, but in response to Councilmember Harris's remark about the transit center, I guess it's a good point to make. You know, we are elected to make decisions, and they may not be always ones that everyone agrees with, but that is our job. And it would be no different than saying with the transit center, well, we don't want to make that decision. So I think we'll put it to the vote of the people and decide, do they, let them decide where the transit center is going to be, because we don't want to take the heat for it. And unfortunately, that is part of being a representative, and you're elected into office, and that is your job. But that being said, I guess I would like to tout some of the things about this project. It's the Thomas Edison Inn, the Convention Center, and the Baker College Culinary Arts School. The entire project is $27 million in our community, of which a third is part that's being funded through county bonds. The other piece of it is $18.8 million in private investment. The economic impact of this project is far-reaching. During construction, it's estimated there will be $28.2 million in sales in the county, direct and indirect. Employment will be at 206 people, with earnings estimated at $7.8 million, direct and indirect, and will produce construction contracts that will be awarded locally in the amount of $27 million. The annual economic impact following completion of the construction phase is expected to be $25 million in sales and employ 248 people, earning $8.8 million annually. Also, as far as the city of Port Huron's concerned, we will get additional income tax revenue. The benefits of a convention center to the community is jobs, both during the construction and permanently. New visitations by attendees of conferences, some of whom will return with their families. New developments most likely will sprout up near these facilities. Businesses in the surrounding areas will see an increase, and this is just not Port Huron. Port Huron Township, Fort Grashit, all of the surrounding townships will have an increase in shopping, dining, and overnight stays at the other hotels that are out on the periphery of Port Huron. Attendees to some of these events will see this area as a place for future growth of their respective businesses and industries. As cited by Marcy Fogel of the Blue Water Visitors and Convention Bureau, a tourist spends an average of $100 if they're here for a day. If they stay overnight, it's about $366. This will bring more tourists to town. If this project does not proceed in a timely manner, the Thomas Edison Inn will close, and the existing employees will all lose their jobs. It has been eight years that this hotel has been on the market. It was not until the Convention Center was added to the equation that refurbishing the Inn became a viable option. Baker College joining Inn with its Culinary Arts Institute was an added incentive. Without the Convention Center, the project is dead. Aside from all of the above statistics, it's a moot point to pass a resolution asking for an election on the Convention Center, the 45-day period whereby a citizen-driven petition drive for a referendum has passed. Having an election other than by referendum is not a legal option. We are a representative form of government, and your elected officials, whether they're city council members or county commissioners, are required to make certain decisions based on what they believe benefits the community and county as a whole. Having an election outside of the parameters of the law is not an option. This project is one of a kind, with public-private partnerships like we've never seen before. We should be embracing it, and we should be thanking the county commissioners for being a catalyst in this project, and I personally do thank them. Is there any other discussion? We'll take a vote.
Councilmember Moller.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
No.
Councilmember Archibald.
No.
Councilmember Cole.
No.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
No.
Mayor Rep.
No. The motion fails. We'll move on to Resolution Number Three.
It's requesting that the McMorn Authority develop a strategic plan for McMorn and present it to council no later than May 1st, 2013. Schedule a joint meeting within 45 days to discuss a plan of action and give updates on their progress on an every-other-month basis, and this resolution was requested by Mayor Rep.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewandowski. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Cole. Is there discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Moller.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
Resolution Number Five.
It's authorizing the refinancing, or excuse me, authorizing the refunding, which is refinancing of outstanding wastewater bonds originally issued in 2003, to reduce the city's current debt service payments and achieve future interest cost savings.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz. Is there discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Harris.
I would just like to ask Mr. Ogden, if we extend this, how long was the extension going to be on the payback? That's basically what I see, is this proposal would extend the debt payments.
Mayor Rep., members of council, your question was if we extend this?
We're going to get a lower bond rate, and we're going to extend these bonds for payback.
What is being proposed is that we refinance these bonds essentially at a lower interest rate. The time period for repayment is not changing, so the bonds are not being extended. I don't think that we would be able to, reasonably certain, we would not be able to extend the time period and still have present value savings. And that's essentially the requirement, is that we need to show present value savings. As it stands, this will save about $17,000 a year in interest payments over the next 11 years. It's a total of a little over $190,000. When they calculate the present value, it's about $166,000. So it shows positive present value savings, which is what's required under state law to be able to refinance the bonds.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Ogden? Thank you. Any other discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Moller.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Yes. We'll move on to Resolution Number Six.
It's amending the resolution to public hearing number three, adopted at the February 13, 2012 meeting, to provide that rental certification annual operating fees be prorated, and this resolution was requested by Councilmember Harris.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Councilmember Harris, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Moller, discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember Moller.
I have a legal question, I guess. If it was passed the way that this resolution states, in fact, wouldn't that make it ex post facto? I guess that's my question.
The short answer is no. This type of annual operating fee is actually a rental inspection fee. As long as your rental inspection fee is revenue-neutral, it's legal. So the way the city has, as I understand it, is billed for a rental inspection fee is by tying the cost of the rental inspection program to an annual operating fee. So the answer is no. That's not a concern.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I'd just like to comment, you know?
Councilmember Harris?
Without creating any anxiety over the issue here, you know, the fact was, I don't have any problem with the resolution. The problem I had is landlords called me, and the fact that it said that this resolution will take effect immediately. Well, the landlords have got bills that were predated, so mine is kind of a legal interpretation. If it's immediate, when is immediate? I think it starts with that day. Does immediate go back three months, two months?
It's an invoice that's submitted for, as I understand it, for the beginning of the calendar year, for 2012. And as such, as I said, as long as it's tied to your rental inspection program and it's revenue-neutral, then it's legal. So it would be effective immediately, yes, for this new invoice that went out at the beginning of this year, following the passage of the change. So I think those, I think I heard they went out in the last week or two.
Right, and they're retroactive.
No, they're actually tied to the rental inspection itself. So that program operates on an annual basis.
Okay, thank you.
If I could ask Ms. Harmer a question. I want to ask Ms. Harmer a question if I could, please. It's my understanding that these bills go out every year and have gone out every year in January, February. Is that correct? Based on what the cost is anticipated from what it's been up to that point for that previous year.
That's correct.
So this is the same timeframe in which the landlords have received their bills every single year?
It is.
So it's no, like a double dipper or something? It's the same. They got a bill last year at the same time.
They did. That's correct.
And anytime, and I do believe that we have lowered the rates at some point, we certainly didn't prorate any lowering of rates.
No, that's correct. We send out an annual operating bill every year at about the same time, end of January, beginning, middle part of February. The only time that we have not done that is, well, no, I take it back. We've sent the bill out every year. We have not necessarily altered or adjusted the fee every year, but we've looked at it every year, and that determination is made, and the bill is sent out at the same time.
But in the past, when there has been reductions in fees, we've certainly not taken it back to the previous six months and several lower, yeah?
No.
Well, give you a higher rate for this part and a lower rate for the other part. Yeah. It's really an annual rate. Okay. Does anybody else have questions for Ms. Harmer?
Just one final comment. I just want to end this with the fact that I respect what council's going to vote, and I hope you respect me for this proposal. Thank you.
I just had a question. I'm not sure who to address the question to, but if we were to adopt this resolution, what would that mean for the city, having to go back? Is it rebilling? How many landlords are we talking about?
I'll let Mr. Ogden answer.
Thank you.
Well, Mayor and council, this program is set out by ordinance to be revenue-neutral. So when the request came before you to set the fees, that was in order to cover the current year's expenses. If we were to consider some kind of proration, we would have to actually come back to you with a fee increase, because we still need to generate the same revenue. We need to generate enough revenue to cover the expenses in the program. So if we were to do that, it probably would be some kind of rebilling, but then it would be coming back to you with a second request for a larger bill in order to collect enough revenue in the final four months of the year that we still reach the 12-month total that we need to cover the expenses of the program, because the program's required to break even by ordinance. So as Kim had said a year ago, when expenses in the program increased, at that time, we knew there was a fund balance in the program that could be used, and so we didn't come to you proposing a rate increase then. And really, the rate increase this year was proposed only because there's no cushion left. The fund balance is fairly small now, and so this was the minimum rate that was needed in order to cover the expenses of the program.
And the bills have already gone out?
Yes, the bills, no, they did not go out until council approved the new rate.
Correct.
I think when Councilmember Harris referred to them being retroactive, he meant that they are intended to cover the fiscal year.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how or why this started this way, but it has. The expenses are incurred from July 1 to June 30. Essentially, we're operating without revenue for the first six to eight months of the year. The bills then go out in the winter, but they have consistently gone out at that time. When do we look back, Kim? It started in 96, was the full year of the program. So, and it's been consistently done over that period. We've probably had more years of decreases in rates than we have had increases in rates.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions for either Mr. Ogden or Ms. Harmer? Thank you. Any other discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Cole?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
No.
Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
No.
Councilmember Archibald?
No.
Mayor Rep?
No. The motion fails. We'll move on to Resolution Number Eight.
It's directing the city manager to work with legal counsel to prepare an agreement with the city of Marysville to allow collaboration of the Port Huron and Marysville Fire Departments.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Lewandowski, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Councilmember Lewandowski.
I just want to thank Chief Ike and Chief Conick over at Marysville for working on this. Surprised at the amount of savings. I really thought there wouldn't be that much of a savings when we got into it at first,